Good morning, everyone. Welcome to Commissioners' Court, December 13, 2021. Would you all stand with me and we'll have a pledge and a prayer?
Dear Lord, we thank you today for your beautiful sunshine. I pray you'll be with us as we make all these county decisions today, Lord, that we can make the right decisions. Give us your wisdom, Lord, and your judgment and guidance today. Be with all our first responders, Lord. Be with all our sick, Lord, and help us with this pandemic that's going on, Lord, that we'll get through this and recover to normal, Lord, get back to health. All these things we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, once again, welcome, everyone. Our first meeting of the month, or actually our first, what I'd call, regular meeting of the month of December. This is the 13th of 2021, 9:00 a.m. Item number one on our agenda is public comment time. If there is anyone that has anything that they would like to address the court that's not an agenda item, you may, of course, speak on an agenda item once we get to it, but any general information you would like to share with the commissioners. All right, we'll move to item number two. Item number two, I took this opportunity to introduce to you, most of whom probably don't know Melissa. Melissa Laurent, am I pronouncing that right? Give me the official pronunciation. Laurent, okay. Melissa Laurent is our Veteran Service Officer. She was originally the Camp County Veteran Service Officer, and as you will recall, several months back, we entered into a relationship with Camp County to share the talents and abilities and availability of Melissa with our veterans. And it's what I believe is an economical, what's the word I'm looking for? I think it's an economical way for Titus County as well as Pittsburgh to provide services for our veterans that, quite frankly, do need help from time to time. They do need to know the ins and outs of getting the help that they need, and Melissa is very good at that. So I want you to remember this face. I want you to remember the fact that we do have a Veteran Service Officer. They're not housed in the county courthouse, as has been the case in years past. She offices in Pittsburgh. She has, she doesn't work full-time out of that office. She's probably available more full-time than you would realize with her phone number, and my office has her phone number, and she is available to speak with our veterans and is very good at what she does. So remember, Melissa, understand what that relationship is and understand that we do have a Veteran Service Officer. I would like to share with you this press release and give Melissa some recognition so that you don't just believe what I say about her, but this is a recognition for outstanding service to area veterans. Melissa Laurent, Veteran Service Off-- this was a, this was a press release, by the way. Melissa Laurent, Veteran Service Officer for Camp and Titus Counties, has been recognized by the Veterans County Service Officers Association of Texas, that's the VCSOAT, for her continued commitment and outstanding service on behalf of veterans, surviving spouses, and dependents in the two counties she serves. In a letter informing Laurent of the award, the president of VCSOAT, Melissa Castillo, announced that every year the association recognizes a limited number of Veteran Service Officers for their outstanding services. She noted that Laurent is one of a few Veteran Service Officers from across the state to be recognized for their work in 2021. Laurent was presented a certificate of appreciation by Castillo as a token of our appreciation for your outstanding service to the veterans, surviving spouses, and dependents you have assisted in your community. Laurent has 10 years of experience working on behalf of area veterans. She began as a Veteran Service Officer for Wood County in 2012 and retired in August of this year. She currently serves as the VSO for both Camp and Titus Counties. Laurent, who holds a bachelor's and master's degree from Stephen F. Austin State University, resides in Wood County, where she and her husband Jim, a U.S. Army veteran, own and operate M.J. Brahmins. Melissa, congratulations on that. Obviously, you do know what you're doing, and I've heard that time and time again, and we appreciate the fact that you help us out and that you were willing to give some of your time to our area veterans, and thank you for that service that you provide. Anything you want to add that we ought to know?
Well, I would just like to say it's always an honor to serve our veterans, and it's a great pleasure and honor to do it, and I'm happy to serve the veterans of Titus County. I think this arrangement is working out wonderfully for both of our counties. I might add in Titus because sometimes I bring, it brings me more younger veterans, where we have an industry here that has jobs for our younger veterans over in Wood County. I don't see as many younger veterans as the older veterans, so that's been a breath of fresh air sometimes to get to meet these young veterans and be able to assist them.
Good deal. Well, thank you very much. You are welcome to stay. You're welcome to stay for some of what's coming here in this meeting. You're welcome to go now. I just want you to know that it's very common for anybody to get up and leave whenever they're ready. So we appreciate it again, look forward to working with you more in the future. All right? Thank you for coming today. Item number three, consider and possibly approve minutes. And here is a typo that I'm responsible for. I have on here November 15th of 2021. We've previously approved that particular set of minutes. We looked at the calendar incorrectly. That should be November 22nd. That was our last special meeting of the Commissioners' Court. So item number three, despite the fact that it says November 15th, I would like for you to consider and approve the meetings from the 22nd is the actual date there.
Make a motion. We approve it?
Motion is made to approve that set of minutes by Commissioner Parchman.
Second.
And second by Commissioner Parker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And then moving to item number four, consider and possibly approve minutes from the December 9th special meeting of the Commissioners' Court. This was last week. It was a single agenda item that had to do with the completion of the remodel and enhancement of the Justice Center. And at that time, we heard from Glenn Calber, who was our consultant there from Preford Complex Designs, and we finalized the payment and approval and sign-off on that building, and we are back in it. That's the good news. Our JPs and constables are back in that nice new building. So we need to approve that set of minutes that represented that brief meeting from the 9th last week.
Make a motion.
Motion to approve is made by Commissioner Applewhite.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item number five, report from Commissioners regarding road work status. Tell us what you're working on, Commissioner Parker.
We've been doing quite a bit of patching, and we've done some scavenging on a couple of roads. We're trying to do some work, or gonna do a little work around the school. We've got some roads down there that need some attention over the next couple of weeks while the kids, after the kids get out of school and teachers and everything, so we're gonna try to do that this, you know, from now, first of the year. So going, running a little shorthanded because some of the guys are taking their vacation now. They usually wait this down the year to take their vacation, so running a little shorthanded, but we're, we're getting the job done, so.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Applewhite.
Well, we've been patching. We've got, last week, we picked, took two dead trees off the highways, wouldn't follow nobody, and we, on 1825, we put a 60-inch by 30-foot culvert in there to replace the one that was eat out there, and we've been patching and just trying to get everything going, and like I said, we're all shorthanded because everybody's taking vacation.
All right, we've been taking advantage of the good weather, repaving and doing some scavenging on County Road 1070, 2010, 2170, 2120, 2125, and 2730, and we also been out all around the precinct, patching potholes and picking up some trees that had fell and cleaning, cleaning up the side of the road from a lot of limbs and stuff that had failed in the last few weeks.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Parchman?
We've been replacing culverts, doing lots of scavenging, doing, patching lots of potholes.
You shorthanded, too?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you. Item number six, presentation by Chief Larry McCray. Chief is back here for his bi-monthly report, keeping us informed of the status of fire protection in our joint effort with the city and with the county volunteer fire departments. Hudson, I've got a handout here for you regarding this that I printed out for you, just to... Chief, welcome. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you, Judge. We'll just briefly go through the document that I gave you all, starting with the attendance of the chief's meetings. As you can see, there are some chiefs that are not making the meetings at all, from Five Star, Argo, and Sugar Hill. The others are attended pretty well.
What can we do to help that, if anything?
I don't know. We've, in fact, the chiefs had a meeting, I believe, a couple of weeks ago, just the chiefs themselves, and they're discussing whether we even continue these meetings or not, or if we do, whether it's, you know, every other month, or quarterly, or what have you. So I'm not sure if we'll even be having these anymore. The next thing is the VFD membership and the members' training. If you look through there, it's a little bit different from the document that I've been giving you. This lists all the volunteer firefighters in the county, and it also shows whether they're structured firefighters, structured fire support, motor vehicle accident support, or Y-land, and it also shows you the number of hours that they are training since June through October. If there's an X out by their name, they have got the training. If there's not an X out there, that means they do not have the training. And as you can see, there is quite a few that do not have any X's by their names. Next is the monthly county-wide training and attendance. This is the training that we provide monthly to the VFDs, and again, this is for September and October. And you'll see in September, we did motor vehicle accident support and helicopter landing zone, which is something we do quite frequently, and we only had 14 out of 100 firefighters show up for that. Then in October, we provided vehicle extrication training, and as you can see, we had very few attend that, only 18, and most of those, it was, we were not able to finish in one night, so we were gonna have to finish it in another night, and as of yet, they have, a lot of them have not contacted us about finishing those classes up.
And this is training put on specifically for the volunteers, or is this all the Mount Pleasant City firefighters as well?
No, this is specifically for the VFDs, yes.
And this is sponsored by?
Mount Pleasant.
By the city?
Yes. Then the next thing that comes up is the VFD training sessions, which is part of the agreement, and you can see when they're having meetings and when they're not. November and December, more than likely, they will not have meetings just because of the holidays. After that is the monthly training at volunteer fire departments and their attendance, and as you can see, that is, in September, there were only two departments that had training, and then in October, there were only five departments that had training. The next one is the volunteer firefighter response to incidents.
Could I, I'm sorry, could I stop you? I'm thinking slowly. Could you kind of tell us what your current policy is with responses from those that are not trained?
I'll just go through this with you while, at this point. So recently, we had a close call where an untrained member of the VFD was freelancing in a structured fire in the county and get severely injured several firefighters by their actions. Freelancing in the fire service by definition is a dangerous situation at an incident where individuals do not check in with the incident commander and receive an assignment, but instead work independently and take actions without the express knowledge or consent of an officer or the incident commander. Essentially, it's when firefighters do what they want to do, when they want to do it, and where they want to do it. As a result of this incident, I sent an email to all the VFD's chiefs telling them only members trained for the type of incident that is occurring or to respond to an incident when MPFD is responding to the incident also. The Fire Protection Agreement between the city of Mount Pleasant and Titus County places the responsibility of command on Mount Pleasant for incidents it responds to, except for incidents in the city of Taucko and the Taucko Fire District. This includes the safety of all personnel working at the incident. MPFD does not have enough personnel on scene to work the incident as well as watch out for situations like the one above. We depend on the VFD members responding to the incidents to have the training required to work the incident safely and efficiently. It is a responsibility of the VFD fire chiefs to make sure their members are properly trained. During the November 8th Commissioners' Court meeting, you were told that county volunteer firefighters are unpaid professionals doing the same job and the same training as professional career firefighters at the Mount Pleasant Fire Department. You were told there are 30 volunteer firefighters that are fully certified to fight structured fires. You were assured the VFDs in Titus County respond to incidents with more than six members on a regular basis. You were told some of the VFDs are pretty much self-sufficient and report, and the report that I'm providing to you does not reflect that. There was no documentation provided to support any of these statements. However, the documentation that you have before you show those statements were not accurate. Career firefighters are regulated by the Texas Commission on Fire Protection and must be certified, which requires several hundred hours of initial training and also requires many hours of continuing education training annually. Volunteer firefighters are not regulated by the state of Texas and are not required to have any training to be a volunteer firefighter. It's up to the VFDs to determine what, if any, training is required for their members. In late 2020, a committee made up of county officials and several volunteer fire chiefs worked together to come up with an agreement that all, that all agreed on for fire protection services between the county and the VFDs. In early 2021, the agreements were executed. Included in the agreements was the requirement that the VFDs would develop standard operating procedures, meet training requirements, and have their equipment tested in addition to other items. The agreement requires the VFDs to provide documentation to the county emergency management coordinator, which I serve as. I did not ask for this role, but I agreed to take on the responsibility and provide reports to the Commissioners' Court on a bi-monthly basis. The information I provided to the court comes directly from the information provided by the VFDs monthly. All I'm doing is compiling the information from what the VFDs turn in. I can't help it if the information and the reports are not favorable for some of the VFDs and/or that you don't like what I'm telling you. It's when I provide you the documentation showing that the new Sugar Hill Fire Chief was lying and falsifying documents. Some of you are more concerned on how the issues were discovered than what he did. There is a perception by some that I'm making these presentations to cause the VFDs to go away, or that it's being done to benefit MPFD in some way. MPFD or I do not have anything to gain by the VFDs going away. In fact, it will negatively affect MPFD because it will put more of a burden on MPFD to provide fire protection services to the county. MPFD is doing all we can to make the VFD successful by establishing online training that can be accessed by a volunteer firefighter and done at their own pace and their own time. We also offer our instructors to provide classroom training for the VFDs as well as conducting monthly county-wide training for all the volunteers. This is at no cost to anyone. All the volunteer firefighters have to do is spend their time to get the training, which very few are doing. MPFD is not required to provide this training, these training opportunities. However, I believe it's the right thing to do. MPFD does need additional career firefighters. In the years past, VFDs had personnel that were trained that would respond, however, that's not the case in recent years. MPFD depended on those volunteers to provide the additional apparatus and manpower needed for the incident. The Fire Protection Study funded by the city and the county in 2016 included the need for additional career firefighters. That was five years ago, and there's even a greater need now. Recently, we responded to a structured fire in the county with a person trapped inside, and the structure heavily involved in fire and smoke. MPFD arrived with a four-man engine company and a deputy chief several minutes before any of the VFDs arrived. MPFD did not have enough personnel to fight the fire and rescue the person in the house. The decision was made to abandon the fire attack and focus on the rescue operation. This was done at great risk to our firefighters. Two firefighters entered the house through a window and found the victim. However, due to his size, they needed more help to get him out of the house, so a third firefighter went in to help. The three firefighters, with the help of a fourth person at the window, removed the victim from the house. Sadly, he succumbed to his injuries, but our firefighters gave him the best possible chance to survive. If something had gone wrong while the firefighters were in the house, like the ceiling and roof collapsing on them, there would not have been enough firefighters to rescue them. The five MPFD firefighters were the only ones on the scene during the rescue because no volunteer firefighters had arrived. If this incident had occurred in the city, there would have been 10 trained and equipped firefighters on scene to make the rescue, fight the fire, and if something had gone wrong, there would have been personnel to rescue the trapped firefighters. MPFD had to remain on scene of this fire for over four hours because there were no volunteer firefighters available and trained that we could turn the incident over to for them to finish mopping up the fire. During this time, if there had been another structured fire or any other type of incident in the county, it would have been up to the VFDs to respond to the incident and handle it. Based on the volunteer firefighter response to this incident and the training of the volunteer firefighters, it's highly unlikely that there would have been a response to the other incident that would have had a favorable outcome. This situation occurs multiple times a month because any time MPFD is working an incident in the county and another incident should occur in the county, it's up to the VFDs to respond and handle it. Apparently, some do not understand that MPFD getting more career firefighters would benefit the county as well as the city because MPFD would be able to send more firefighters to calls in the county when needed. As for the VFDs, are the VFDs as an organization doing the best they can? I would say, yes, they are, for the most part. The VFDs have good equipment and stations, however, the VFDs can't make people join the departments, it can't make them train, it can't make those members respond. Are the members of the VFDs doing the best they can? There are members of the VFDs that attend most of the training sessions and respond to a lot of the calls, and MPFD greatly appreciates those individuals who are giving their time and efforts for the VFDs. Sadly, we have just lost two of these kinds of firefighters in recent weeks while they were working at incidents, and they're going to be greatly missed. However, there are far more members that do not get the training and do not respond. They are basically just names on a piece of paper, which does not help the VFD or anyone else and results in incidents like previously described. A VFD needs strong leadership for it to succeed. Some of our VFDs have strong leaders, but some do not. My responsibility as the Mount Pleasant Fire Chief is to make sure our personnel go home to their families at the end of their shifts in the same shape they arrived for duty and to protect the lives and property of the citizens of the city of Mount Pleasant and Titus County as well as those who visit Mount Pleasant or even those who are just passing through. MPFD is going to continue to provide the best possible fire and rescue services with the resources that we have available. However, if we don't have adequate resources for the incident, we will most not, most likely not meet the expectations of the person who called us to make their situation better. I would also remind the court that in the 20-plus years that the city has had the contract with the county for providing fire protection services in the county, MPFD has exceeded the requirements of the contract by sending more personnel and equipment required by the contract to almost every incident MPFD responded to in the county and will continue to do so as long as I feel I can.
Are we creating a situation by, the creation of this contract and the requirements for training, et cetera? Are we making it so burdensome that we're, we're squelching the manpower? I mean, what's causing this? What can we do to find a better balance? And what can a, what can a volunteer do that simply doesn't have enough time in their schedule to get all the training that they need? How can they, how can they help?
It's up to the individual person. Like I said, you can't make them join, you can't make them train, you can't make them respond. It's gotta be in those people, and we have those volunteers in the county that are dedicated. They do make a lot of the calls, but they're smarter more than that one. I mean, it's an individual choice. It's their, it's their personality, it's their want to. Like I said, we've offered everything we can. You know, they've got good equipment, they've got good stations. We offer all the training they could ever want and need, but just not doing it.
Are we, are we training less than we were 10 years ago?
Absolutely.
Yes, it's not just that we've implemented these training requirements and they're not...
No, and the training requirements, like I said, the state does not require any training of a volunteer, but over the years, when the chief's meetings, we're the ones, the county chiefs have sat and agreed that obviously, you know, the people need to be trained, they're gonna go to these calls, just like what I said. We could have had some of our people severely injured by the actions by that untrained person and could have sent them to the hospital or worse. You know, we can't take, can't tolerate that. You know, I'd rather have them, you know, we don't need those people on scene. They're just a hindrance.
Can they be support staff? Can they just bring the water? What can they do?
Absolutely. As I understand, like I said, the county VFDs, the chiefs met the other night, and I think some of these commissioners were at those meetings. They may be able to tell you more than I was because I wasn't there, that the volunteers, you know, they're supposed to meet and decide exactly what their, their services are gonna be, that they're gonna provide. Is it just they're gonna bring us water? Obviously, we gotta have water. You know, that's an important thing. We've got to have that, you know, but, you know, I, we can't fight fires with five people not successfully, and we could have had a tragic outcome here. We could have lost an engine company in that house that roof had collapsed, so. You know, it's not fair, it's not fair to the community, it's not fair to our firefighters to ask them to do, send them to the county to do the job with half the resources that we give them in the city to do it. It's not fair for the people who are going out to protect their property because we're not having the resources we need to do that. You know, they're expecting one thing, and we're able to deliver another. If all boils down, we gotta have people. If they're not gonna volunteer, you know what the alternative is for that?
No, I guess I, I don't absolutely know what the alternative is.
We have to hire more firefighters.
Or you have, or you have to accept a lower level of fire protection.
Correct. Or you just accept that if we get there, we're gonna do the best we can if your house burns down, or we can't make a rescue, that's just, that's the best we can do for you.
And I think that that's our job, is to figure out where on that scale we want to be.
You know, and in fact, in this volunteer response, you can see that, that, you know, the summary paver shows you that since April, it's not changed any. The total number of volunteers may have changed, but we only have about 29 or 30 that are called active. That means they make 25% or more of the calls. And in fact, during the September, October timeframe, there were 15 times where we got no response from volunteer fire departments at all. And you will notice, you know, in the next, next section after that is the overlapping incidents. You know, about 10% of our calls in October and September were overlapping, and I can tell you for last month, we had 30% of our calls overlapped.
Explain, explain what that is.
That means when we have one call going, another call comes in on top of, or two calls comes in, more than one call.
And it might be a county in a county, or it might be a city in a county?
Yes, and we have been, luckily so far, this has And we have been, luckily so far, there's happened where the first incident, we may have been just finishing up when the other one hit, and we could cut people loose. But, you know, the time's coming where that's not going to happen. We're going to be, where we can't turn people loose. It's going to be dependent on the VFDs to handle the calls.
And I think it's obvious, but just to explain that, you don't have an unlimited supply of additional firefighters at your two stations. There's only a certain number that are on duty at any given time, and there's only so many events that they can be at at the same time with that number of people.
We have 10 people on duty today. 10 people doesn't go very far. It takes that many just to do one structure fire, really.
Commissioners, any questions, comments, thoughts? We're getting ready to enter into 2022, which will be a year when it's time to renegotiate that city-county contract. And the purpose in keeping you informed of these stats is so that you will be able to make the best possible decision when we negotiate with the city. And we have to make that determination, how much city services do we want to pay for? How much county services can we rely on? What's the proper cost? And do we want to provide the same level of fire protection in the county that is provided in the city by a professional department? Or do we want to be somewhere less than that? And so, by giving you this information, that way you're better prepared when the city presents us their proposal and we respond with our proposal. So, these meetings are your opportunity to ask Chief McCray any questions about this. So, anyone, this is good information, good thorough information. Yeah, I think we realize the times are changing. We have, we've lost a lot of good firefighters just simply due to retirement. You know, it's time that they move on and the influx of new, younger volunteers because of just the changes in life and the demands on schedules is making it not just in Mount Pleasant or Titus County or even Texas. It's a national phenomenon, as you've told us, that volunteerism just is on the downhill slide. And it's become more and more expensive to be a volunteer, it's become more time-consuming, it requires better equipment, it requires more training, and we're feeling that squeeze. Commissioners, any final questions, comments? You want to continue on here? Is there anything else you want to bring to our attention? You've got a real good thorough package here.
Like I said, the last thing, I would just say that, I won't go over and line out of line out, but the status of the requirements of the contract, the very last page on the SOPs and the records and all that, you can see where we're at on that. There's still a lot of it that has not been accomplished.
For those of you that are interested, I'll make this available to anyone that would like a copy of that. I'll make you copies, I'll send you an email copy, but it's a good thorough presentation here that it addresses, and it addresses how many people are members of each volunteer department, how many of those are able to attend events, how many are getting training, how many are attending the training, and how many are going to chief's meetings. So, thank you again. I know you put a lot of work into this, and we appreciate it. You bear a lot of responsibility for managing not only your department, but helping us manage ours, and we appreciate that leadership.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Item number seven, this is a presentation by Ronnie Foster. Ronnie is here to talk to us about the federal government's 30-by-30 land preservation goal. And he will, I've got a feeling he is going to ask us for some kind of a resolution to oppose it. So, Ronnie, thank you for being here, and turn it over to you.
First of all, I wanted to, on behalf of 107 Texas residents, and 92 of them being Titus County and myself and the Titus County Republican Party, we want to thank you for allowing us to present a resolution opposing the federal government's 30-by-30 land preservation goal. Our objective is real simple, we want to protect private property and to increase awareness of the community. Just think about how little people are here today that's not even aware. So, we want to be able to increase awareness. Now, we need to be clear, the government's objective through this executive board is they want to control 30% of all the land by 2030. So, that's eight years from now. To put that in perspective, when you look across America, we've got 2.27 billion acres in the United States, and currently, 12%, which is 272 million acres are privately protected in the natural state. So, 30% would equate to 681 million acres. So, to hit the goal of this 30-by-30, they still need 409 million acres. The 12% already protected includes the national parks, wilderness area, permanent conservation easements, state parks, national wildlife refuge, national monuments, and other protected areas. And by the way, they get the 30-by-30, their next goal is 50-by-50, 50% by 2050. It's pretty aggressive. Another point we need to make, point out, if you look anywhere, you don't see any kind of strategy that they're putting in place. That's kind of scary. They want to do it subtle, and they could do things, for example, from conservation easements, protection of endangered species and others. So, we need to be aware to make sure that we're able to see this, and that's one of the reasons that I'm here today. The, to put, how that would impact our county, our county currently contains 259,000 acres. The one, the land that's privately owned is 251,000. So, that's 96.73% of private property we have. So, we haven't been really impacted, but we could. So, if you know that we have 251,000 acres and the goal is 30%, well, that equates to 75,000 acres. So, if you took our regular tax percentage rate and looked at the average price of acre conservatively, then you're talking about from a tax, from a tax base, that could be over $3.6 million. Now, I realize we'd get some kind of relief, but what everybody's got to realize is that relief, that comes from the government. Guess where that money comes from anyhow? We, the people. So, yeah, we get a relief, but it's really, we're paying our own relief, and I think that's important to know. So, we also, we lose revenue and productivity. We're not able to use that land. We've got the Preakords here today. They got some land that was taken over from easement, and all of a sudden, they say, Billy, you can't use this money for. So, you lose productivity, you lose revenue. So, with that stated, what I'd like to do, and get to the point, I'd like to read, and I'll hand this to y'all, is just the resolve. We've got seven points here I'd like to read, and then I'm going to turn it over to y'all guys to be able to take action. So, the resolve is this. The Board opposes the 30-by-30 program, including its objectives of permanently preserving 30% of the nation's land in the natural state by 2030, or any similar programs that would set aside or prevent the productivity use of millions of acres of our land. The Board, number two, the Board further opposes the designation of land in Titus County as wilderness, wilderness study areas, wildlife reserves, open space, and other conservation lands, thereby restricting public access to such lands and preventing the development and the productivity use of resources on or within such lands. Number three, the Board supports to continue private ownership of land in the county to reorganize the nation's need for domestic sources of minerals, energy, timber, and food and fiber. Number four, the Board recognizes and supports the state of Texas water rights systems, including the doctrine of drinking water standards, rules, and regulations for public water systems and other state laws and programs governing water rights and the water use, and opposes any federal designation of water and water course within the county that would impair or restrict the water diversion and uses authorized under the Texas law. The Board supports reasonable, national, regional, and global greenhouse gas emission policy and the goal that are comprehensive, practical, cost-effective, that's a key word, cost-effective, right? And not unnecessarily single out a specific industry or activities, but opposes the use of global climate change as an excuse to set aside a large tract of land as to preserve our open space to fulfill their 30-30 program objective. Number six, the Board also mandates that any land or rights that are acquired to fulfill the 30-by-30 program objective should be acquired only from willing landowners and for payment full and fair market value for all rights and interests acquired, not through regulatory compulsion, and only after analyzing and considering the impacts of such land acquisitions on well-being, health, safety, welfare, and economy and culture of Titus County, its businesses, and its citizens. Number seven, and the last one, if y'all so choose to adopt this resolution, then the Board shall send a copy of the resolution to the Department of Interior and all other relevant federal and state agencies. And with that, I'm going to hand this to y'all. We also have, at the county fair, we did some petitions, had some people sign, that was where I recognized the people that state of Texas, and most of them were in Titus County. But I'm going to hand this to you.
Who drafted this, Ronnie?
It was a great question. We had, they provided templates across the country. So, that is drafted by a consistent template, standard template, and we put in the information that made it relevant to Titus County. I've got some handouts, so Brian, I've got some handouts here that I will leave with y'all, but you can go for yourself and search, and you'll see exact formats that I've used today.
Just put it in your own words, what's the goal behind this? What is, what are we opposing here? What is the purpose? Is this all in the name of global warming? What else is there going on?
Well, I think, from my perspective, it's for us, for us as people and for our elected officials to be aware of things that come down so that we don't sign on to something that ends up taking away our property. We just, we may not have, Brian, here in Titus County, that doesn't mean it can't come here. But you do have some areas where they're touching national parks, where they could actually have easements, and they may come across where there are strings attached, but it looks good on the front side. And I think my key here is for all of us and y'all guys to be aware so that when we see something and it looks too good to be true, or we're getting money, just realize everything has strings attached if it comes from the government. I guess my, it's for us to oppose it to be aware is really my message to all of us, is be aware.
But again, what do you think is the motivation behind this 30-by-30?
To control power. They want to control it. If they control everything, think about it. If they ever got to the 50-50, like I said, think about how much productivity, just in this area, think about this area alone, that takes away, you think about the Preakords, got Pilgrims, that takes a lot of productivity away that you cannot use no longer. So, Brian, they end up telling you what you can and cannot do. And I don't think that's what they want to do. Right. And that's just, so that's how they've moved into it to be able to get that done. Sounds good on the front side, you know, more national park lands, more things to do, but it comes with a cost.
I don't even think it sounds good.
Well, thank you, thank you. But they try to paint it up where it could be in a scheme way, make it deceptive. I just want us to be aware.
I appreciate you making us aware. I was not, I had heard about this, but I really didn't know what was in it.
Okay. So, I'm going to leave that with y'all.
Sure can, yeah. Come on up, if you'll come up to the mic there, that way anybody that's watching this later on will be able to hear you.
Yeah, you guys don't even know that much about it, but even legislators and congressmen don't even realize. Even Ted Cruz at one point had no idea this was going on. So, this is something that's being very subtle, it's being pushed in very quietly, and it's very scary to see that that part and that their motivation of being quiet and subversive because even legislators and congressmen don't know. So, to my point is if everyone, you guys included, can get the message out to other commissioner courts when you're at different meetings, whatever you're doing, so that their legislators and their congressmen can understand and know more about it. So, that's all I wanted to say.
Thanks, Eddie.
And to that point, I'll be finished. We're trying to actually put a template together to be able to help other counties that want to be able to do exactly what we're doing today. We want every county in Texas to be able to do.
Well, where you need to be going is getting appointments scheduled with our council of governments meetings that, you know, that occur all over, where you can come in and you can have an audience there of county judges, mayors, et cetera, like at our, our Texas Council of Governments that meets monthly. I mean, this is something that they need to have a presentation on, and they may need to have somebody like you there to explain this. I'll ask about it, but this has never been brought up at any of our meetings, and that's the kind of places where you need to be, along with this, of course.
Okay. Well, and again, our goal is, and that's a good point, but think about it, if we're doing something like this in all the commissioner courts across Texas, then we're getting it out to the people. It's got to get down to the grassroots to make a difference. To that, Brian, thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions here? You've got some guys here that can probably answer those questions. And then, since this is an action item, we need to do something. We either need to table, we need to vote down, we need to vote up, we need to come up with a future agenda item, but based on what you've heard, what, if anything, would you like to do today?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve this resolution opposing the 30-30 land deal.
As it's written here?
Mm-hmm.
I'll second that.
Just as a point of discussion, Ronnie, you've used the word "the board" in here. Does that need to be replaced with the Commissioners Court of Titus County?
Yes, yes. Brian, can we do that, the back there, or can you do that?
If this group approves it, that would be wonderful, yeah. That would be great. Wow, so you've got a motion and a second here. Is there any discussion on this? I'm very grateful that this has been brought to our attention, and it's just scary.
Is this where they would just take any, they could take any land that you had and just use it like they want to use it? And just, you know, just say the reservoir, they could say that we can do it, we can do it no matter how you like it?
Yes, that's right.
Well, I'm not for that, no. I appreciate y'all.
So, you're going to speak?
By Titus County taking this move today, you are really setting a terrific precedent for counties all around us. Currently, there are only two counties in Texas that have proposed this particular resolution and opposing it. Governor Ricker... Governor Rickert in Nebraska, nearly, I would say 90% of the counties in Nebraska have now passed this resolution to protect the land in that state. Governor Abbott did oppose this plan back in March, I think, of this year, but the counties are not aware of it. We are just beginning to make strides to make the opposition clear. By Titus County doing it, you're going to set a real benchmark for the other counties in the area too, and be a leader.
Well, and again, I say you've got these 24 councils of governments, and the council of governments brings together leadership from counties and other municipalities, so that would be a way where maybe you could speed up this process, because I got a feeling that the judges that I know would be appalled at this, and they would be grateful to have this kind of information too, so. Eddie, I'm just curious, do you want to share with us how the Preeferd family has been impacted by something like this? Just to bring it home?
Well, right now, sir, there has been no significant impact that I know of in this, but what we see coming can be significant to everyone in, not just everyone in Titus County, everyone in the nation. If we can't stand up in the state of Texas, the state of Texas is going to be, is being considered the last stronghold. If we lose the state of Texas to communism, socialism, the rest of the country will fall. So we as leaders have to start standing up today in the state of Texas to save the nation. This is one step of that.
So there hadn't been an actual giving up of some of your property in the name of this action?
Nothing yet, nothing as of yet, but they are working and doing their best to pass this along so that it can happen.
Wow. Okay, I've got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion or questions from the commissioners? There is a motion on the floor to accept, approve, and actually sign this resolution opposing the federal government's 30 by 30 land preservation goal.
And change it to Titus County Commissioners Court?
Yeah, the wording in this document here will be customized to be appropriate for the Commissioners Court of Titus County. All right, motion, second to approve, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposition? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Will it help you to give you this back?
Yes, sir. And I'll get it back when we can see you.
Thank you.
Gary, do you need a minute to catch your breath? I mean, I could bump you up if you're in a hurry, if you want to, if you're going to enjoy Titus County for the rest of the morning, then I'll get to you in a few minutes.
That's fine.
Okay. All right, well, let's talk about some more land issues on a smaller scale here. This is, thanks to item number eight, consider and possibly approve bids. If I could get everyone's attention here for a second. Mr. Preeferd, I'll see you at two.
Thank you, Eddie.
Item number eight, consider and possibly approve bids for purchase of properties that have been previously struck off tax rolls at delinquent tax auctions. We've got five properties today, and I'm going to ask you to hold off, and let's go through all five of these, and then when we're done, unless there's a particular one that you feel uncomfortable about, I'm going to assume that you're going to approve these, but I'm not going to assume it to the point where we're not going to discuss this, but maybe we can approve these as a group. This is something that we do, seems like here lately it's been about every third meeting. We've got properties that are brought to us by Tim Taylor, and the background on these is that they get behind in their, in the payment of their ad valorem taxes, they get behind to the point where collection efforts have failed, and these properties actually go to auction. And just because they go to auction doesn't mean that every property is going to even get a bid, much less a minimum bid. And so at the point when they don't have a bid for these properties, they are literally struck off the tax rolls, and they are bringing in no revenue whatsoever, they're like in limbo. And so we have, from time to time, these properties go up for auction on the courthouse steps, literally, and other people can bring bids on these particular pieces of property to Tim Taylor, and that's what we have here. We've got five different properties. Let me tell you about the common denominators in these. All of these bids are coming from an entity called AKJ Contractors LLC. And the second common denominator is that all the bids are for less than both the judgment amount that was determined to be the totals owed plus penalties and interest, and they're also less than the appraised value that was originally on the tax rolls. These are located in a variety of different areas, and I'll run over those, some of the, some of these, East Eighth Street, Ellis Street, Cecilia Drive, East Seventh, and North Forest. And I think a lot of these are driven by the fact that we're seeing some housing, aggressive housing construction going on around here. Housing prices are up, the need for small affordable homes, which goes along with smaller affordable lots, are producing a new kind of contractor out there who's bringing some, you know, revival to some of these areas. So you're not going to be particularly impressed by the bids that we've gotten, but nonetheless, let me start with, the first one is lot, you won't know what these are, Lot 21B, Block 160. This is at, on East Eighth Street. It's a vacant lot located in a wooded area just south of East Eighth Street, which has no dedicated street access. The closest street would be North Forest, which does not appear to be presently maintained. We have a $500 bid. We had an original judgment of $2,099 and an appraised value of $1,181. Bid of 500 on that first item. The second item is coming from Lot 2, Block 1, in the Taylor Courts Edition. This is on Ellis Street. We have another $500 bid. We had a judge, well, I'll start at the bottom, we had an appraised value of $1,279, that's what it was originally on the rolls for, and the fact that the taxes have become delinquent, and we have penalties and interest added to that, the judgment amount was $3,248. We have a $500 bid on that Ellis Street property. The next item, this one's, this must be the crown jewel here, we've got a $5,000 bid on a piece of property that was appraised on the rolls at $16,500. We had a judgment of $22,009, and this is a vacant lot on Cecilia Drive, vacant lot, Cecilia Drive. The next one is another $500 bid. This one is located in a wooded area on an easement south of East Eighth Street. The old city plats refer to the easement as East Seventh, but it's never even been paved. $500 bid, $1,078, appraised value $2,018 judgment. And finally, we have a $1,000 bid on another piece of wooded area on East Eighth with an address of 619 North Forest. So these are pretty undeveloped areas, as you heard on that last one there, we don't even have any pavement on that particular easement that's called a street on the official maps. Here's a $1,000 bid on appraisal value of $3,127 and a judgment value of $3,014. So those bids, you had three of them at 500, one at 5,000, and one at 1,000. Any of those that you want to go back and look at, otherwise, I would submit these to you, the recommendation that you approve and accept these bids. I don't know that we're the only entity that they're asking permission, but we are one of those entities, and obviously, they're hoping that we will approve these as well, and convert these properties to hopefully something that will become a residence, or at least contribute to a development of an area.
Does it say how big those lots are? Are they big enough to put houses on?
That's a good question. I don't know that I have that information here. Let's see if I've got any. Yeah, if it's got, if it's got city water, it would be big enough, just by looking at some of this, at this plat as compared to some other lots that would have houses on. It's a small lot on that first one. The second one, and these kind of, it seemed to be in common areas, so maybe we're trying to take in an entire area there, and they may not be able to get a house on every single one of these pieces, but maybe each piece serves a purpose for access, or to provide a couple of different lots that would go together to maybe make up enough to build a house. So I don't know what the buyer's intention here is, he's not required to state that, but I guess he has a grand plan, and you'll see some, again, urban renewal development going on in these areas. And, yeah, these all appear to be big enough to put a house on. Now, that doesn't mean that they've got a nice street in front of it, it doesn't mean that they're, these are, here's a picture with, you know, this is heavily wooded on that particular one, and each one of these has said that they're in wooded areas, there's going to be a lot of post-purchase work that's going to have to go into these. And let me tell you this, you'll remember this name, Angel Guzman has been a buyer on other pieces of property. Angel Guzman is doing business under that AKJ Contractors, and that's been Angel's MO is buying these properties for development and house building.
I make a motion we approve the bids on the properties.
All five?
All five.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Fitch to accept and approve these bids, three at 500, one at 1,000, and one at 5,000, for all five of these properties, A through E.
I'll second.
Was that you, Mr. Parker?
Me.
All right, we have a second from Commissioner Parker. Is there any further discussion? All right, if you're comfortable with this, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, well, Gary, that does bring me to you. We have here with us Gary Luba from H.W. Lochner, who's getting further and further along, and we're actually to the point now where we're ready to start cutting some checks to some of these folks that have sold us pieces of their property that we have asked for to create the right-of-way necessary to widen and straighten FM 1735. And Gary's been hard at work negotiating with these folks, and, you know, you'll recall that several meetings ago, he brought us a few that, you know, had asked for an increase in the amount that his appraiser said the property was worth, would work, and so far, he's done a good job of being able to go back to them and get, and get them to accept what was, what was offered there, and so we appreciate that. So today, you have come with, how many total parcels, and I'll be able to give you the...
I think it's 15.
15 parcels.
It's 10 owners, but total of 15 parcels.
And Gary is just asking for our permission and for our approval so that we can instruct the auditor's office to cut these checks to Homeland Title so that these can go to closing. So we've had a backlog there at Homeland Title, and the pipeline is freeing up, and they've been able to process some of these. I'm going to run down, I don't know how much detail you want to go into, but I want to just kind of go over some of the, some of the total prices here. We've got a $45,000 payment, a $151,000, $22,000, $52,000, $17,000, $493,000, I want you to elaborate a little on that one.
Okay.
$264,000, $21,000, $25,000, $10,000. What do you want to tell us to give us just a little more information other than just say, okay, here's the check? Although I believe that you've got everything documented properly, and you've gone through the proper procedure, obviously, and you've arrived at an agreement, and you've got signed contracts on anything, we're asking for a check here. The heavy lifting's already been done, and it's time to pay these landowners.
Yes, sir, that's, that's it. So I'll just go through each one of these. Basically, so the final amount, we've gotten the closing statements from Homeland Title with the amount, you know, the closing fees added, so basically, on average, about $1,500, you know, per closing, for, for those closing fees, which includes, you know, like recording fees and their escrow fees, you know, things like that, typical things. So the first one is parcel five, that's Margaret Span. So with the, the final amount on the closing statement, do, you know, due for Titus County to pay, be $45,745.71.
Who's paying these closing costs?
That would be the county. And so as part of the, it's all part of the right-of-way cost.
Yeah. Are there any portion of the closing cost being paid for by the landowner?
Uh, no.
In that we're even paying the title?
Yes, sir.
Title insurance.
Right, right. So they will net out, you know, the amount that's on the deed, that's what they agreed to. Okay, next is parcel six, that's Laborio Barbosa and his wife Irma Hernandez Moreno, and that one is a relocation, but for their property, with the, with the closing cost involved, it's $151,237.71.
Okay, you said that includes a relocation. Now, is any of that, is that money just to buy the property, or is there some money there to help them build another house?
This $151,000 is, is to pay for their property, and they'll, so they'll get the separate benefits from Texas dot on the replacement housing supplement. So...
Theoretically, they'll use this money to buy another parcel of ground, and then...
Yes, sir.
And then Texas dot helps them with rebuilding of a home.
Yeah, so they've gone out on the market and calculated what, you know, houses are going for that are available that's comparable to theirs, so that's where that payment comes in to bridge that gap between what we're getting paid and what the market, you know, because it could go up higher depending on the availability of the houses, you know, and I think, I want to say they may have four or five bedrooms, so you've got to find something that's equivalent to that. So, so in the way the prices in the housing market are going now, it, you got to be able to put them back, you know, like they were.
But this check ends the county's liability to that particular family.
Yes, yes, that's right.
It's not up to us to go out and find them a parcel that we're swapping with them, it's...
That's correct.
Here's the money, you go do whatever you want to do with it, and Texas dot will fill in the blank as far as helping you buy that house or pay for a construction or whatever.
Yes, yes, yeah. And let's see, the next one covers two parcels, this Larry Dells and his wife Reba, and this parcel's nine and 11. So with everything together and the closing cost, it comes to $22,489.71. Okay, next, covers three parcels, which are 16, 19, and 20, and that is Richard B. Calhoun and Bobby Sue Calhoun, and everything together with the three parcels and the closing cost comes to $52,632.96. And by the way, these are 15 parcels, so this is like a swath of about half of the parcels that we need to acquire, so things are moving along, you know, get a little inertia here and there, but it's, it's, it's going pretty good, you know, so we should have quite a good amount of parcels for, you know, whenever the utility relocations start. So what we're looking at there is... So what we're looking at there is probably, probably late spring or, you know, something like that to get started. And so the next one is our parcel 17 and 21. That's Betty June Banks. And so everything for her is together with the closing cost comes to $17,569.71. Okay. Here's, here's the, the, the big one here. And this is Trisud, that facility there across from the church on 1735. And so had to basically pay for the whole thing because they've got to have a new one up and running before they can take out the old. And-
It's a water, water tower, a water storage tank.
Yeah, the water storage tank, you know, and of course, cost, you know, have gone up on that, on the materials and things this year. And anyway, so what we negotiated out plus the closing cost comes to $493,928.94. So, but they still have, as far as the utility coordination side, they still have their water mains up and down the highway that they'll have to, you know, move over. So that's a, that's a separate cost there. But, but this takes care of the, you know, majority of their facilities, you know.
Does this dismantle that, pays for dismantling as well?
Yes.
They're responsible for?
They're going to keep, you know, they're going to retain some things. So if they can reuse anything, they can. So, and from what I understand, they've worked out a, a deal with the property owner adjacent to them, which I think is Nathan Cody Brosnan. And so it'll be, you know, just right, right next. And they chose there, I think, because it's, the, the elevation of the ground is a little better than on the south side.
So they'll have a new storage tank somewhere in the vicinity?
Yes.
But it gets it off of our needed right-of-way.
Yes, yep. Okay. The next one is parcels 25 and 26. That's Billy Edwards and wife Geraldine. And they, one of these is a displacement, but it's, it's a, it's a tenant that's renting. It's kind of a brown frame house there. And so we were working with them separately to get them relocated. But as for the, as for the real estate, we have, they accepted the offer, but that, the two parcels plus the closing cost comes to a total of $264,955.21. Okay. The next one is parcel 27, which is owned by RB Capital Limited. That's Ricky Baker. Okay. And they accepted the offer and with the closing cost, it's a total of $21,194,071. Okay. Next is parcel 29, which that's Ricky Baker's aunt, Joy Ruth Roach. And the offer accepted and with the closing cost, it comes to a total of $25,008.71. Okay. And the last one is parcel 32, which is owned by Abel Aronan and his wife Maricela. And that comes to, there was a, a small increase there for a counteroffer, which was approved. And that, along with the closing cost, comes to a total of $10,444.71.
Okay. So two houses relocated and a relocation of a water storage tank.
Yes.
Everything else was essentially raw acreage. Might've had some improvements on it, but-
Right. Just, yeah, fencing, things like that. Right, right.
All right. And you need our approval to have the auditor cut these checks to Homeland Title.
Yes, sir.
Barbara, you got money in the bank?
Do you have money in the bank?
Okay. Gary, thank you.
Thank you all very much.
That's about half, that's about half down.
Yep. And the others are in the process. So it's just, some of them are, are a matter of Homeland Title getting to those closing statements.
How many do you have left if you're just at a stalemate on as far as negotiations?
Um, well, parcel four, that person was kind of dragging his feet and that's the convenience store. But we may still be able to work that one out. It's now the, we talked on the phone this past Thursday. And so he's got a, he's got a estimate on the, this sign pole, which is like a steel monopole, but it doesn't have a top on it. But, you know, he had that put in. He said it cost him more than, you know, what the appraiser had arrived at. And he said his estimates about maybe $2,000 more for that. But he does want more on the land value, which I think could be supported because I went back and looked at the 2021 assessment value and it's really close to what he's asking for there. So I think that one's going to be doable, you know. And so, so far, as far as eminent domain, I think we're just only going to have like three parcels to go and that's because of, of just bad title problems.
Tax lien.
Yeah, tax lien, judgment liens, things like that.
Okay. All right. Any questions for Gary? Otherwise, he would like your approval so that we can have Barbara cut checks, get these things closed.
Gary, is the, the closing cost check needs to be separate from the other one?
No, sir. It's, it's all going to be in one lump check. So what that does, the title company takes that and then they'll cut out of their escrow a new check to the owners.
Okay.
You know, minus the, the closing cost.
I make a motion, we approve payment for the right-of-way for 1735.
Thank you. Commissioner Parchman makes a motion to get these payments over to the title company.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Commissioner Parker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Great. Thank you, Gary.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
You think you'll be back for our pre-Christmas meeting in about 10, 12 days?
Uh, sure.
Yeah, well, you don't think you'll have anything that quickly for us?
No, 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 no. It'll be before I get some of these other ones. Do y'all have two commissioners' court meetings for January?
Well, in, in December, we're going to have one that's actually four days earlier because of the Christmas holidays. Instead of on Monday, we're going to actually meet Thursday of next week. So that would be an awful rapid turnaround for you. I can't imagine.
Well, it's possible that if, you know, Tammy can get, get those few, I think it's about three or so, if she can get those to me.
Well, let me put it this way. If, if there is, I'm going to need to know about it by this Friday afternoon.
Okay.
Because at the very, very latest, I've got to post this at nine o'clock next Monday morning.
Okay. And the meeting is on?
Thursday.
Thursday.
Meeting is on Thursday of next week.
Okay.
But to give me the proper posting period, it's got to be posted.
By Friday.
One week from right now, which is Monday, which means I'm going to have that thing typed up before I go home for the weekend.
Okay.
So I would need to hear from you by Friday afternoon.
Okay. All right. Well, I'll, I'll see if I can get Tammy to get those out to me. And that'd be great.
Otherwise, we'll be back the second Monday in January.
Okay.
All righty.
Yeah, yeah.
Very good. Are you going to, can we, what do we do with those checks? Take them to the title companies?
I'll give them to me and I'll, I've got everything.
Well, I don't know that we'll have them printed out here while you're here in town. Will we, Barbara?
I don't think so.
What's that?
I don't think so.
Oh, I can, I can wait, you know, if it's-
That, that is possible? I was going to say we could mail them to you, but, or we could even take them directly, but-
I've got everything.
She says that, you know, maybe, maybe by the time you have lunch or something, we could do that.
That'd work good for me.
Okay.
If there's no extreme rush on you. Okay.
All right. Thanks.
All right. Thank you all.
We did approve those, right?
Oh, we did.
We did vote.
Right. Got to sell. All right.
Okay. All right. Item number 10. As a result of things that were brought to our attention specifically by Sue Evenwell regarding concerns over federal mandates and accepting money related to the ARPA, the American Rescue Plan Act, I told you that I would check with Artex Council of Governments and Chris Brown, who did a good bit of research for me. I want to give you the highlights of our conversation that he put in form of an email. Judge below is what came back from TARC Texas, that's the Texas Association of Regional Councils, and then NADO, National Association of Development Organizations. These are kind of a step above ATCOG. They're kind of like a, ATCOG is a consortium of counties. These entities are a consortium of COGS, as it were. Here's what came back from TARC and NATO. They have not seen or heard of any text that would require vaccination or other mandates with regard to ARPA funding. They're keeping their ear to the ground and do communicate with NACO, that's the National Association of Counties, on these types of issues. Let me know if you hear anything different or more specific. Here's one of the responses that came from a person that he reached out to. Hi, Chris. Thanks for reaching out. I completely agree with your assessment in the last email you sent below. To the best of my knowledge, the hidden mandate concern is not entirely legitimate. It may be a misinterpretation of existing federal guidance or an overly broad linkage of separate sources of guidance. For example, the Treasury-administered coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery fund dollars, the ARPA funds going directly to cities and counties can be used for vaccinated, vaccination-related activities. In other words, vaccination distribution, vaccine incentive programs. But I'm not aware of any hidden mandates requiring vaccination or masking of officials or citizens in tandem with the administration of these funds. I've read the interim rule and I've not seen anything in the guidance of this nature. Separately, the Biden administration has issued some executive orders that include vaccine mandates for federal workers and federal contractors. In theory, this could perhaps become important in cases where a city or county is using a contractor and paying the contractor with federal funds, in other words, Treasury, ARPA funds, or otherwise. In other words, depending upon decisions that cities, counties are making on how to use the Treasury funds, there could potentially be an interaction of these separate sources of guidance. Even so, my understanding is that the contractor would be the party responsible for following the federal rules and orders about vaccination and masking. If others you've reached out to respond in any way that's significantly different from my understanding, please let me know. As always, the National Association of Development Organizations can't provide legal advice. This is just my best understanding. And again, that's from Marielle Burgoyne with, she is the Deputy Executive Director with National Association of Development Organizations. This is from Jenny Lewis Ford, who was in town last week at our COG meeting and had lunch with us last Thursday. Judge, I'll leave the research on the federal bill reading to the NATO team, but I've not heard anything like this to date. Our Attorney General is definitely contesting federal vaccine mandates of any type in court. Some recent examples are here below. So they're all making, they've all seen what Ken Paxton has written. This is their response. These folks study this a lot closer than I do or that this court is capable of doing. So that is their response. I've given you that information there to help you with a decision here on the upcoming item number 11. Are there any questions or is there any more information you would like for me to obtain for you related there to number 10? So that was just a discussion item. It doesn't require any action. I'm just reporting back to you what I asked the COG to, to look into for me. All right. That said, moving to item 11, consider and possibly approve issuing a request for qualifications. We call that an RFQ, for a grant manager to assist the county with the American Rescue Plan Act grant funds. This is not a bidding process. This is similar to what you would do when you are trying to get professional services that are not, not done on a bid, who's the lowest bid basis. In an RFQ, that is a request for qualifications that you issue publicly. And we have done this before and we say, hey, we are looking for a grant administrator. Please tell us why we should consider you. What are your qualifications? What is your experience? We're not asking about price at this point. We're asking for your qualifications. We will then make a decision based upon their responses. And then we sit down at the table and we negotiate pricing with that selected individual. Pricing doesn't come until that second step. So this is something that Barbara has been encouraging for the last few months. I agree. I think the sooner that we do this, the sooner we're going to be in a position to start considering seriously what we can do with the American Rescue Plan funds that we are given. And just like we ran into last meeting, you know, beginning to talk with Peoples Telecom, we may be interested in moving forward quickly, but we really need the help and guidance of a grant manager, grant administrator to help us consider how we go about doing this so that we don't break any rules and run the risk of spending any of that money inappropriately. Have I said that right, Barbara?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So I know that Barbara supports this. I now support this. I would like for you to consider whether you are ready to go out for an RFQ to begin the process of interviewing and ultimately selecting a grant administrator. We don't, we're not ready to approve the actual selection or what it's going to cost yet, but this is how the process begins. If you have questions or comments, I'd like to hear them.
I'm good with it. I think we need to do that.
Well, you may not be good with it when you find out how much it costs.
I hear you.
Nonetheless.
It's a lot of money to keep up with.
But, well, it is. And it's the, the kind of money that you better be sure that you're doing every step of the process right because you don't want the federal government saying you spent that money inappropriately and you are responsible for giving it back.
We met with a guy named Tremor Wojtek from Texas Association, Texas Association of Counties, and he was under that same impression. He didn't see anything, had any strings attached for mandates. He's a great guy to help us with questions and stuff in the future.
Tremor's a former county judge now working for TAC. All right.
Be a good resource to talk with.
Is anybody bold enough to give a motion on this and whatever way you want to do that?
I don't have a problem going out for RFQ and then we can decide from there what, you know, where we've got to go. So I'll make a motion that we go out for.
All right. Commissioner Parker makes the motion to issue an RFQ to begin the grant administrator selection process to help us administer ARP funds.
Second?
Seconded by Commissioner Fitch. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item number 12, consider and possibly approve a contract renewal with preferred interpreters with changes that include payments for travel time with possible action. This is the group that we approved earlier in the year who told us we will go to work for the county as your interpreters. And again, that's a pool of interpreters that's managed by a lady named Mrs. Meeks and she- by a lady named Mrs. Meeks, and she is, she told us clearly back then, I will, I will, while you're, while you look at me and my capabilities, and while we decide if we're willing to drive from Tyler up to Titus County, but I want you to know that at the beginning of your new budget year, which was really October 1, there, we are going to ask for more fees. So we're not going to ask for it initially, but as you'll recall, they had not carefully considered the travel time and the mileage that would be involved coming to Titus County, but she had, she had initially agreed that she would do it for us before we talked about the cost of travel. But before we engaged her last spring to be our interpreter that's provided, of course, primarily for the district court, she said, if you all like me, and if we like our working relationship, and we agree to continue past the end of September, I'm going to have to ask you for a change in our payments, and that's primarily for payment of our travel time, because we've got a lot of travel involved coming from Tyler up to Titus County. So here are the modifications that will be included. If you choose to continue with preferred interpreters, we are going to have to make changes and we are going to have to pay them more. So listen carefully. Fee structure for preferred interpreters. Our professional fee is $95 per hour. That doesn't change. Two hours minimum per interpreter applies to all scheduled in-person court appearances, hearings, consultations, meetings, conferences, et cetera, plus up to four hours of travel time from Tyler to Mount Pleasant and back to Tyler. So realistically, you can assume somewhere between three and four hours, depending upon where her people are coming from down there in Smith County, up to Titus County. And so the main change there is you don't start the clock running at $95 an hour when they walk in the door. You start it when they step into their car and begin their travel from Tyler to Mount Pleasant and then back. So we want to be especially careful that we utilize them as much as possible and not maximize their travel time going back and forth, because we're now going to be paying for that. The hourly rate of $95, two hours minimum, applies for also virtual court appearances, hearings, consultations, meetings, conferences conducted by Zoom, Google Meet, Microsoft Team, or any other video conferencing programs. I don't believe that's a change there. There's a fee cancellation of $175 for virtual or in-person scheduled assignments if they're not given 48 hours. After hours, emergencies, holidays, and weekend hourly rates are $145 per hour, two hours minimum, plus the same travel time at that rate from Tyler to Mount Pleasant. I don't know how often emergency hearings come up, but they're stating that in advance, just so we know. Trials, jury trials anticipated to last three days or more, where interpretation service is required, must be scheduled at least three weeks in advance. A cancellation fee, here's a biggie, a cancellation fee of two full days, eight hours at $95 per hour, will apply if the jury trial is canceled less than three business days before the scheduled trial time. Bench trials anticipated to last two days or more, where interpretation service is required, must be scheduled at least one week in advance, and a cancellation fee of a half day, four hours at $95, will apply if the bench trial is canceled less than two business days before the scheduled trial time. So she's stating clearly for you that we are now going to start charging you for travel time, and then she is also making it real clear that we don't want to be arbitrarily canceling time that they are scheduled, because in their defense, it's hard to pick up a jury trial where you've committed for a couple of weeks in advance, and all of a sudden it's pulled out from under you and they're idle for days, weeks, or whatever, because that canceled. Now, sometimes jury trials do get canceled, and that's unavoidable from time to time if a settlement is reached, something that's unanticipated, but I'll certainly make sure that the court schedule and the judges and the bailiffs understand there are some hefty penalties in here, and we really need to do the best job we can at coordinating all this. So that said, I don't know of a better alternative for an interpreter. That is still the clear choice, in my opinion. It's just going to cost us more. So either way, we need to tell preferred interpreters, we're not going to say, sorry, we don't agree to this. We either say we agree to it, or thank you very much, but we're going to find somebody else. And she's been patient with us here for the last couple of months while we have made this decision. Judges have been busy and such, but we do need to give them a response and initiate this new fee structure if we're going to continue with them, because they did tell us in advance that this would go into effect first of our fiscal year.
Brian, have the judges, or the judges are aware of these cancellation times?
I have, I have sent this all to them. I hope that they have registered that, but it's time, honestly, for me to have a face-to-face with all of them and say, make sure. But nonetheless, we're the entity that's telling them, this is who you're going to use. And so along with that, they don't make the selection. I think they made their choices clear to us several months ago. This is the decision that we came up with for a variety of reasons. We just want to say now, okay, this is who we're going to use for the time being. You can still cancel this relationship with proper notice that's given. I can't remember if it's 30 or 60 days, but we just want to remind them, it's very costly, our travel time is costly, and cancellation time is even costlier.
I make a motion that we hire them, approve them, and it changes.
Well, I think your, I think your motion is, they are currently working for us. You make a motion that we agree to the new payment terms that include, among other, travel time paid at their hourly rate.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Parchman. Is there any further discussion or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item number three, consider and possibly approve a three-year lease extension with Printworks, the corner office across the street there that was a remodel project several years ago, and Printworks has been our one and only tenant in that building. Last time we met on this, we agreed to get some more information as to what going rates are out there. Here's what I found. Reminder that they are paying us currently $500 a month and have been paying that. I told you that I thought it was time for revision there, and I have talked to the owner, and he knows something. He knows it's coming. On the high end, a dollar per square foot was what one of our prominent realtors said was the appropriate rate for a downtown space of that nature. You've got about 1,300 square feet over there. You're currently at $500. I personally think that maybe we shouldn't consider that high end. Maybe then again, maybe you want to. I think, based on my conversations, that $1,000 a month, which would be doubling the current rate, would be reasonable. Now, we can always work in here an escalation clause. We can give them three years at this rate, revise it. We can give them one year. We can do it any way you want it. I put in there a suggestion of three years. That gives them, you know, an obligation to us to stay there, and they have paid without any problems. But again, if you say, no thanks, we're going to go up even more, you may potentially lose them. Maybe you won't. You'll need to find another tenant to go in there. That may be easy to do. We may could yield that $1,300 a month. I don't know. But I personally think that for now, a $1,000 increase would be reasonable, but again, I'm just giving you my opinion.
I think $1,000 sounds fair.
Are you willing to give them three years at that, or do you want to scale that back? What do you think would be smart?
I think we can log into three years.
Without any promises as to what's coming after that? That's what I would like to see you do. I don't like these options where you guess at that future price way out there. You know, if, if real estate continues to do what it's been doing, we may want to have another substantial increase at that time. So I would suggest three years, but with no promises beyond that.
That sounds good.
You're okay with $1,000?
Yeah.
Any other thoughts or opinions on this?
Sounds good to me. I second the motion.
Okay. All right. The motion is to grant Printworks, or at least for me to take back to them our proposal of $1,000 a month for three years with no promises after that. And I would say that, I would say that six months before the end of that three-year period, and this period will begin January 1 of 2022, so '22, '23, and '24, I would say that in mid-'24, we should be able to expect, we should be able to present them with a new proposal, so that we don't wait again till the last second here. All right. All in favor of $1,000 a month, three-year lease with Printworks to begin January 1 of 2022, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Discuss options for repair of the annex courtroom HVAC unit. We've got a very important large air conditioning unit over there at the annex, and we nearly had a train wreck over there back when the weather was still warm, and they had a multi-million-dollar civil suit going on, and that unit went down. It was found to be, and I'll give a thank you to Wood Air Conditioning for getting over there and getting that fixed, because I don't know what they would have done without an air conditioning system going, but they quickly got on top of that. We have a leak in the system, multiple leaks, and they are not repairable leaks. We can keep pumping Freon in there. Problem is, this is not an area where we can just casually wait for the next time that it goes down. If we are in a jam in that courtroom that gets used on a regular basis, we don't want those guys to be without heat or air. It's a heat pump, and so we need to fix this to provide both heat and air conditioning, and that is a very heavily, that's probably some of the most important square footage that we've got in the county, and I think this warrants prompt attention to it, and I think we need to fix it, and we need to fix it right. And if I can find my quote from Wood Air Conditioning, there it is. All right. Here's your options. To cheap this out, we can replace just the internal equipment, $4,887, and leave the outside. I have done this personally before, and I've, I've regretted that decision, because it seems like it's not far behind that the outside unit goes down and I'm replacing that. But that is a way to fix the current leak problem. This is an 11-year-old unit over there. This was one of the units that was replaced when we had some grant funds back in 2011, and we replaced multiple units. So we're about at the end of the expected life on a piece of equipment like this, according to Greg at Wood Air Conditioning, and this is, there are two units that serve this area. It includes some of the foyer over there at the annex, as well as the main courtroom A. These two units work in tandem with, and share some of the same ductwork to provide the heating and cooling over there, so it's not just one unit. So to replace both of those interior only would be $4,887. If we do the probably more appropriate repair, and that is to replace both complete systems, I've got you two different options here. You've got a 14 SEER and a 16 SEER. That's a function of what is the efficiency of that unit. These units run a lot in the winter and in the summer, and so I believe that if we go with the higher-rated 16 SEER, a more efficient system, that you will, you'll see the cost savings to justify the $2,000 price difference. If you replace both with a 14 SEER, $12,387. If you go with a 16 SEER, $14,287, so $1,900 of difference. I recommend that you replace both of the units, complete inside and outside components, and I suggest you go with the 16 SEER and recoup our energy savings in the form of a lower bill. If you want to, just for now, repair just the bare minimum to take care of the leak and postpone the replacement of the outside units, $4,887. I mean, that sounds a whole lot better. It's $10,000 less, but that's $5,000 savings per, per unit. But again, the way that our equipment has been going here of late, 10, 11, 12 years, is probably the life of these units. But I didn't want to approve this repair and maintenance. I probably could have, but I wanted you all to help me make this decision.
I like the way I'm replacing with new 16 SEER.
Okay. Replace the entire system, both times two, with the more efficient 16 rated.
Yes.
Okay. That is the motion from Commissioner Fitch.
I'll second that.
Are there, a second from Commissioner Parchman. Are there any questions, comments, discussion? All in favor of approving the 16 SEER replacement of two complete units, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Item number 15, discuss providing some dirt work services for the Hartsbluff School District with possible action to follow. Commissioner Applewhite, tell us what you're thinking of Hartsbluff School.
Well, Hartsbluff, Bobby, Mr. Rice, the superintendent, had come to me and asked me if we could help, and I said, well, I have to get approval and everything from the courts, and, you know, he was, what they was going to do, we'd do the work, and they'd pay us, give us amount for, for diesel and stuff, and I talked to John Mark, and he said it was feasible to do it, so he was just wondering if we could do it, and I told him I would, and we would talk about it.
What is the project?
It's for their baseball field and softball fields they're putting out there. They got, they got a guy that's going to put a fence up, and they was wondering how, when they would could get, start, somebody could do the dirt work, and I said, well, I had, it'd be before I go to court, he can find out if I could even, would be able to do it.
Well, what are we, what are we doing, preparing a raw piece of land and scraping it and leveling it?
Leveling it out.
Do we have the expertise to do that?
We could, it's going, it's going to, I just don't, we do, but then we don't. It's just according to how much dirt is going to be having a queue leg to move, you know, because you have to go, you know, look at it, get you a transit, look how high, so the, the high part and the low part.
Do we need to bring dirt in, or is there enough dirt there?
There's dirt. There's, you'll have plenty of dirt there. That's what is going to take the, I just don't know how much it's going to take us to move that kind of dirt.
Would we be expected to run that transom or transit? What do you call it?
Transit, so where you shoot it, see what the, the height of the dirt is, you know, how, the level of the dirt and land and everything, how much you have to take down off the dirt, because there's a big, there's a hill down there. It's quite a bit that you'll have to knock down.
How long is this going to take us, and how many pieces of equipment?
With the maintainer, greater, it's probably going to take a, you know, maybe a week or so. What, I don't know, I really don't know how much longer it'll take us, you know, the maintainer.
One person or two?
One person. Like I said, when you, if you shoot a transit, it'd be two of us out there, because you have to have somebody to hold your leveling and all. have somebody to hold your leveling and all the depth stick and all that.
And how, what are they going to contribute to this process?
Like I said, they was going to pay for the, the bill of the diesel, whatever the diesel bill was going to be.
Well, like I shared with you when you mentioned this to me, I don't think that's work that the county ought to be involved in. I love Hartsbluff School. It's our alma mater for my kids, and I love Bobby Rice, but I don't know that we ought to be using taxpayer dollars to provide these kind of services. And maybe they should hire somebody that's really got more expertise. And I'm not saying you all don't. Y'all may have the ability to do this, and this may be a simple job. I'm just a little bit uneasy about it. Now, one of you may can talk me into this, and maybe this is not, you know, maybe we've established some history of helping out in situations, but that's, that's a significant commitment to run our equipment and a full week's worth of somebody's payroll. But I think the, the use of the equipment is the significant piece here, even assuming you all can produce a wonderful product there. But again, I'm, I'm open to your opinions.
I know it has been done in the past, but I just, I'm, I'm like you, Judge. I think that our responsibility is roads and whatnot. There's too many other people out there that can, can do this job, and, and I know it would be cheaper on them for us to do it, but then we're taking the responsibility of, of our piece of equipment going down, and, you know, anything could happen there, and I just, I just don't think it's something that we really need, need to get involved in.
Yeah, maybe there's some other role we can play in that project, but, you know, I think this is a several-thousand-dollar job, and I understand their desire to save money where they can, and, and we have helped out. And how does this compare, for example, to that project we did for Chapel Hill?
I really don't know, because before my time, I, I do know I talked to my guys this past week about that it, and they spent, I think it was close to two weeks then, working, working on the, you know, that, that track and everything that they done out there. And that was just the dirt work and all that they done.
But there were some transportation issues there that did benefit the county, as I recall that project. In other words, we were, we were doing some rerouting of some bus lanes, and we did actually accomplish some traffic reduction.
You're actually talking about the reclaim that, that they got, we, we helped them acquire from the state, and it was, that was something that, that, you know, it benefited us too, because we, we were able to, to get our, our stuff, and, and all we done down there with that was, was, they added, well, we didn't even haul it. They, they had somebody hired to haul the reclaim and, and then to level it and everything. So we, we actually didn't do anything other than help them acquire the reclaim from the state.
But it also, that didn't have the effect of reducing some traffic that benefited all the residents that had to travel those areas by rerouting that bus lane.
It cut the buses through their property rather than putting them out on the road and back into the, to the parking lot over there.
And I, and I don't see that this one is going to have any benefit to the county at large. I know it'll benefit all the kids that go to school there. So again, I, that's just my thoughts.
I think it's a little bit out of our expertise, actually, too, so I make a recommendation that we don't do any dirt work out there at Hartsbluff. Make a motion.
Motion by Commissioner Fitch to pass on the dirt work services for Hartsbluff.
Second, Dan.
Second. Well, please express to, to Bobby, you know, our thought process here. If there's something else that we can, that we can do, again, we want to be a good, a good partner. They're certainly a good partner for us, but this is just one we just didn't feel like was appropriate at this time. All in favor of that motion and second, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Homestretch here. Item number 16, approve oral and written reports.
Make that motion to approve them.
Motion to approve, made by Commissioner Fitch.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parchman. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Our treasurer's report is item number 17. You have that before you?
Make that motion.
Motion to approve is made by Commissioner Applewhite.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fitch. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Here's these for your signatures. Item number 18, approve budget amendments. This is budget number six. That'd be 2022-6, so this is the sixth amendment in the new fiscal year. And as you'll recall, I think it was at our last meeting, we agreed to take the proceeds from some of the surplus equipment that was being sold and give it back to the appropriate entity, whether that was the sheriff's office, or whether it was precinct two or three. So we had, just as a review here, and the sheriff's forfeiture fund and sale of assets, he had two sale of assets. One resulted in $2,909. The other one resulted in $29,292. And so we're putting that back into the sheriff's budget. Then we have, in precinct two, sale of assets, $47,284, and in precinct four, $56,743, and we're putting that back into the road materials budget. So we've converted surplus assets that were sold and putting it back into the road materials budget. We then have a $7,000 impact. We voted on at the last meeting to pay for that mass mail-out of the new voter cards that was not budgeted, that we're now going to budget every couple of years. That's $7,000. And then the final impact is $5,000 to general county contingency. So we are pulling that money and putting it into the fire truck fund for Cookeville. You'll remember, we had initially budgeted $40,000. It turned out, the cost of trucks, they were able to find a new truck for $45,000, so we needed to up the amount available to the Cookeville Volunteer Fire Department by $5,000. So elections office mail-out, Cookeville Fire Truck, and then two line items each that affected sheriff's office, and then precinct two and three, coming from the sale of surplus assets. That's the
Two and four.
Two and four. That affected those entities because of the sale of those surplus assets. So all those items are lumped into budget amendment number six.
Make a motion, we approve the amendments.
Motion to approve this amendment, made by Commissioner Fitch.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Applewhite. Any discussion, questions? All in favor, say aye. Item 19, sign pay orders and approve payments.
Make the motion with payer bills.
Motion is made by Commissioner Parker.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Applewhite. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Item number 20, closing comments. Once again, a reminder, we will gather back in here a week from this Thursday. That's only 11 days from now to have our second meeting of the year because of the Christmas holidays and the fact that we are on holiday on that Monday, actually, that Friday and that Monday. So I loaded this agenda up so that hopefully I could give you a gift of a small agenda next Thursday. So if you have anything that needs to be on this agenda, please, please, know that I've got to have it by Friday, this Friday. So we're speeding that up. That's all I have. Commissioner Parchman?
I just want to say congratulations to John Fitch on becoming grandpa.
I guess he'll give us some details.
Amen to that.
As old as he looks, it's about time.
So I have a new granddaughter. She is Julia Lois Reyes, and she's eight pounds and one ounces, and she's 22 inches long, and she's probably the best-looking kid I've ever seen born. That is a, probably a future Miss Texas, I would say. And she's very intelligent, I can already tell.
All right. Congratulations. Anything else?
We're good, just on cloud nine from all that. So excited. God bless us good on that.
What, when was she born?
She's born yesterday, on the 12th, 12:40.
12:12.
Mm-hmm. 12:12.
Very good. Commissioner Applewhite? Commissioner Parker? All right. Two hours. Ooh.
Done.
Yes, sir.
Just so it's not a middle-class meeting, I wanted to ask a couple of questions before y'all got out, so I want to do it before you adjourn.
Sure. Go ahead.
Thank you. I appreciate you asking Chief McGrave for some more explanation while I go on him. He read from the statement he made in here. Have you got a copy of that?
I do not. I was not given a copy of that. I think that's just his note.
Okay. Well, it was obviously a prepared statement. Could you get that for me? Could the court provide me with that?
If I'm given that, I will.
Okay. Well, he's your employee, so could you get a copy of it?
Not in that capacity. He's not my employee.
He's not your emergency. What's his title?
That's not why he was here. He was here as the fire chief of Mount Pleasant. I mean, you could all
It says that though, shouldn't
It is, like I said, I'll ask him for it if I'm given it, yes. It'll be, it'll be available. In fact, it'll be part of the minutes. But it's already going to be part of the minutes because it's recorded and it can be what
Be a lot easier to, for me.
Like I said, I will, I will ask him. And if I, if I'm given that, it'll be part of the minutes itself.
Okay.
Part of the written minutes.
An email he mentioned that was sent to all chiefs?
An email that he mentioned that was sent to all the chiefs?
County fire chiefs.
Okay. What, what exactly did he say, and what was in that?
Well, it was, let's see.
If you'll, if you'll just give me a specific description of that.
Well, I got the same question. Would an email he sent all fire chiefs be a public record that I could get?
Maybe you can. I don't know. If you'll tell me what that email is, I think it's the same email you've been asking me about, I don't know what email you're referring to. If I'm given some more specifics, such as the date or the reference of the subject matter, I'll be glad to look for it and provide you.
Well, he made reference to sending an email to all chiefs while he was in here. If that's accurate, then the email he sent all chiefs would be county business?
Hmm, I don't know. I don't know. I, I'm not aware of that email being sent to me. If you want to ask him about that, and maybe he'll give you a copy.
Well, he's not responsive when I ask him a question, so
I can't help that.
So you're his boss. I mean, he works for
I'm not his boss. I am not his boss.
What's his position with county?
What is his position? Well, he is our emerg, oh boy. He is our emergency management coordinator. He was here today just because he's the chief of the Mount Pleasant Fire Department. Again, I'm not trying to avoid what you're asking for, but if you'll
It seems like you are.
It may seem that way, but if you'll give me some more information on this mysterious email you're talking about, I'll be glad to look through my emails.
Well, it's not mysterious if it exists. If Larry mentioned it, we can assume it exists. Is that fair?
You can assume anything you want. I don't know. If you'll tell me some more specifics about it, I'm sure he emails his chiefs a lot, but I'm not included on those emails.
The only knowledge that I have of this email is all what I got, and then Larry mentioned.
Can you tell me the date?
No.
Can you tell me approximately the month?
No, I'm telling you, the only knowledge I've got is
What was the subject matter?
It had to do with performance today, yeah. It had to do with performance of county fire department.
Okay. Pretty general. I'm not aware of an email that was sent to the chiefs that I was copied on, but I'll look for it.
I'll submit your question, but I'm not sure. I believe you're responsible for providing it.
Okay. If I know what it is, I'll be glad to. All right. Thank you all for your patience today. Anybody want to submit a motion to adjourn? Motion by Commissioner Applewhite. Second by Commissioner Parchman. All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.